I'd like to call to order this Village Board meeting of March 21st, 2019. Would the Clerk please take the role?
President Jackson.
Here. Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan. Excused. Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Here.
Trustee Pojek.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder. Excused. Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us Saturday, April 6th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the Mayor and Village Board. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's Office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Are you thinking about spring projects at home? Before you start, be sure to contact the Community Development Department. Many projects require a permit, including things like new decks, sheds, patios, siding, roofing, and more. Call the Community Development Department to find out if your spring project requires a permit at (630) 260-6030. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
On Saturday, April 13th, Peter Cotton Tail will be hopping his way to Safety Town, located at 301 Civic Center Plaza. He will drop off an enormous supply of treat-built Easter eggs for children up to eight years old. Age-specific Easter egg hunts are as follows. 8:15 a.m., children five years and younger with adult assistance required. 9:00 a.m., children six to eight years old with adult assistance required. 9:30 a.m., children five to six years old, children only. 10:00 a.m., children seven to eight years old, children only. This exciting event is free, and no registration is required. For additional information, contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459. Join us Saturday, April 13th, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Center for Senior Citizens for our annual Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. All-you-can-eat pancake breakfast will be served, and includes sausage and a beverage. Photos with the Easter Bunny will also be available. No pre-registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Adult breakfast costs $5; children's breakfast costs $3; and pictures, $2 each. For more information, call (630) 260-6060. And I will be cooking the pancakes also.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, you know.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Yeah, you know.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To an enable, inefficient, ineffective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited during the months of April and May between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on one specific day. Color-coded "no parking" signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Maritato.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Stop by Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Friday, April 19th, for a meal you will never forget. The Glendale Lakes Golf Club will be featuring their final Fish Fry for 2019 from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Try some great food at a great price. Enjoy all-you-can-eat Fish Fry, soup, a salad bar, and order appetizers and other items off our new menu. Call (630) 260-0095 to make a reservation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojek.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Register today for the annual Glendale Lakes Golf Club Spring Fling. This yearly event will be on Saturday, April 13th, and Sunday, April 14th. This four-person scramble is limited to 36 teams per day. The cost to play in the event is $340 per team. Golfers will receive 18 holes of golf, witt cart, breakfast, lunch, dinner, drink ticket, raffle ticket, and a tee prize. For more information, please contact Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-6010. One, six, oh, two, six, oh, zero, zero, one, eight.
Chesler.
Yes.
Could you do me a favor and be Trustee Schroeder tonight? I don't want to say anything.
All right. The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, and youth program, councilors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. Thank you.
Thank you, Chesler and Marie. Appreciate it. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is a proclamation to proclaim March 30th, 2019, from 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. as Earth Hour. And we have a proclamation to proclaim April 2nd, 2019, as National Service Recognition Day. So if there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. All right, go for it. Thank you. Chief Flint.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
You're welcome.
Hardly a couple months goes by before we're not up here swearing in more police officers. Tonight, we're here to swear in two more police officers. But before we get to that, again, a special thanks to our Police Commission Chairman Rick Schwerner and Esther Wilk and Vic Macias. Is Vic here? Vic's not here yet. So these three have worked tirelessly at getting us the most qualified people to fill our retirements and openings. Can't express enough thanks to them for all the work and time and donated time, by the way, for the most part, that they have given to us and to the village and to the Police Department to get us the most qualified people we can have in our Police Department. So special thanks, much appreciated. So we are here tonight to swear in two more police officers. Jennifer Rosario, step up here, please, and Richard McCullough. Jennifer is going to be badge number 3,007, and Richard's going to be badge number 3,008. Little introduction. So we went from three numbers to four numbers.
Okay. I thought I just lost my mind.
We got the 399, and then we didn't know what to do because our K9s are four.
Okay.
So we went to thousands.
I thought they jumped pretty fast.
Right. So Jennifer comes to us, she's already a certified police officer. She was certified in 2017 at SLEA Police Academy. She's 23 years old, she's resident of Lombard, graduate of Willbrook High School, and a graduate of University of Illinois Chicago. She has a bachelor's degree in criminology, law, and justice, a minor in English, she's a Spanish speaker. She's here with mom, right? Carmen Rosario, her father Pablo, back there, sisters Iliana and Tatiana.
All right.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate that. And then Richard is a Marine vet. He is 24 years old, my math was right, okay, resident of Crest Hill, automatically discharged Marine, is a corporal, infantry team leader, discharged in 2016, graduated from Lockport Township High School. He's currently attending Lewis University, soon to graduate May, so a criminal justice major. He's here with his mom Danielle, his stepdad Michael, his dad Richard, his sisters Alyssa, Taylor, and his brother Ryan, right? Very good. So these are going to be our two newest members of the Police Department. Both are going to start on Monday. Jennifer, because she is certified, is going to go right on to field training. Richard will start the academy on April 1st. So he'll have a week of kind of getting to know everybody, getting a feel for everything, getting all the paperwork out of the way, all the early hire stuff. So without further ado, Marie.
Richard, that's Richard. Sign it later.
We're saying it together?
You could do it together if you would like.
Please raise your right hands. Repeat after me.
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me.
Closer to the mic.
Sorry. No. Okay, let's start again. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Richard McCullough.
Having been appointed to the office of probationary police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of probationary police officer.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary police officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary police officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Welcome, boys.
Welcome, family.
Welcome.
Mayor and Board, I present to you Jennifer Rosario, badge number 3,007, and Richard McCullough for 3,008. Very good. Jennifer and Richard and family, traditionally here, we have cake. So we have two cakes over here. We'll take a little short recess for cake. We have actually a long board meeting after this, so we're not going to spend too much time, but we will have some cake and dessert. And then one of the officers or supervisor in the back. You can see we have a lot of guys here right now, and pretty testament to how they feel about everybody who's coming here to join the Police Department. So thank you, guys, for being here. But then somebody will give you guys a tour, if you want, of the Police Department, and you can see where they're going to be working, get them off your payroll, and get them out the door. So Mayor, we can take a little break?
Yes, we can take a little. We need to vote to recess now.
Motion to recess would be in order.
Motion to recess would be in order.
Trustee Schmidt.
Oh. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Welcome to our family.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Next on our agenda is the State of the Village. It is my pleasure to present the State of the Village Report for 2018. I would like to begin by recognizing my fellow Village Board members. Marie Schmidt, Village Clerk. Sharon Sullivan, Deputy Mayor and District Two Trustee. Bill Schmidt, District One Trustee. Michael Light, District Three Trustee. Pat Maritato, District Four Trustee. Chester Pojek, District Five Trustee. And Mary Schroeder, District Six Trustee. As we look ahead to 2019 and celebrate the village's 60th anniversary, let us be reminded of what a great community Glendale Heights has become. From our inception in 1959, we have grown together, creating history that will last forever. The 2018 year proved to be another positive step in the right direction as we continue to make Glendale Heights stand true to our motto of being a proud and progressive village for all people. As one of the many support departments within the village, the Finance Department is charged with the custody and management of fiscal operations in accordance with both village policies and regulations and governmental accounting standards. For the fiscal year that ended April 30th, 2018, total assets grew by more than $2.76 million, from $162 million to a total $165 million, while total revenues remained steady compared to the prior fiscal year at $51 million. The village's primary fund, which is the general fund, reported a reserve balance of $13.35 million and represents a four-straight year of positive growth. Reserves are now at a level of 7.4 months' equivalent expenditures, exceeding the village's policy of four months and the level recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, of two months. This graph shows a steady increase in the state's shared sales taxes, local real estate transfer taxes, and building permits, trending in a favorable growth pattern. In its most recent report, Woodie's Investor Services assigned the village's credit rating as AA3, citing among its strengths as having ample reserves, stable operations, and flexibility derived from home rural status. Although property tax bills are still a few months away from arriving in mailboxes, residents and businesses within the village will be pleased to learn that there has been no increase to the village's tax levy for 2019. With a strengthening national, state, and local economy, and due to a continued commitment of fiscal responsibility, the village was able to hold the line on the tax levy. As seen on this chart, since 2008, the village's tax levy has gone up by an aggregate of 6.93%, comparing quite favorably to school district tax levies, which comprised nearly three-quarters of the overall tax burden for the same time span. On February 22nd, 2018, the GFOA awarded the village of Glendale Heights with a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for its 2017 comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER. This is the 35th consecutive year in which the village has received this award. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. On January 18th, 2018, the GFOA awarded the village of Glendale Heights with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its 2017 comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER. This is the 35th consecutive year in which the village has received this award. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. On January 18th, 2018, the GFOA awarded the village with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its fiscal year 2018 budget document. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. In order to receive this award, the village must publish a budget document that meets program criteria as a policy document, as a financial plan, as an operations guide, and as a communications device. This marks the fifth year that the village has been a recipient of this award. Both the CAFER and budget document are available for viewing on the village's website. Our Police Department employs a combined staff of 93 personnel, including 54 sworn police officers, five part-time officers, four community service officers, records clerks, crossing guards, a community outreach specialist, and an evidence officer. The department also enjoys a strong volunteer pool of 18 individuals who are members of the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency, ESDA. I am very proud that the village's Police Department continues to maintain the Commission on the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, CLIA, accreditation that it received initially in 2008, having been reaccredited for their third time in 2017. Our Police Department is one of only 797 law enforcement agencies accredited across the nation, and one of only 48 in the State of Illinois. CLIA's standards are rigorous and ensure the department is following the best practices in law enforcement. Part of the CLIA standards require the Police Department to review each incident in which force is used, ensuring that our officers are using the response appropriate for the situation and within legal parameters. CLIA standards also ensure that citizen complaints are investigated thoroughly and in a timely manner. The Police Department is dedicated to improving its relationship with the community. In 2018, the Police Department helped organize and participate in many events for all ages to strengthen its partnership with our residents. For over 25 years, the Police Department has held week-long classes at Safety Town for children five through seven years of age. The classes are held over the summer and taught by officers from the Police Department, as well as representatives from the Railroad Operation Lifesaver, Glen Side Fire Protection District, First Student Bus Company, and AMITA Health at Venice Medical Center, Glen Oaks. For children in 5th through 8th grade, the Police Department hosted the 12th Annual Junior Police Academy. Participants experienced various aspects of police work, from the initial testing process to evidence processing, traffic stops, and officer safety skills. Our state-certified school resource officers spent the school year teaching Drug Abuse Resistance Education, DARE, to 5th grade students and addressing school-related concerns. Through a cooperative agreement between the schools and the Police Department, one officer rotates between the schools that teach kindergarten through 8th grade, while a second officer rotates between the Glen Bar District 87 schools that children from Glendale Heights attend. In addition to teaching classes and attending extracurricular activities, they also investigate police-related incidents at the schools reported by students and staff. The Police Department also strives to keep our residents informed of important crime prevention tips by sponsoring a Neighborhood Watch program and providing a monthly newsletter. In 2018, the Police Department continued to rotate the monthly Neighborhood Watch meetings at various venues throughout the village, which helped improve overall attendance and communication among our residents. In October, the Police Department sponsored an active shooter awareness program. This program provided residents with tools to use in the event they encounter an active violent event. The Police Department is also partnering with several local businesses and places of worship to provide this training. On September 29th, the Police Department, in partnership with the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department and the Glen Side Fire Protection District, sponsored the annual Kids Fishing Derby at Lake Becerra. Members of the Police Department are committed to being strong supporters of the Illinois Special Olympics, raising thousands of dollars for those athletes. SMART 911 is an additional program in which the public can directly add information about themselves and their homes to the 911 emergency telephone system. The Police Department also maintains Code Red, which allows mass notification to residents to inform them of emergencies or other matters of concern by telephone, email, or text. Registration for both of these services is available on the village website. The Police Department sponsored the village's 20th Annual National Night Out. The event was held on the village of Glendale Heights Civic Center campus, and residents were offered free food and games. National Night Out is held to raise crime and drug prevention awareness and strengthen our police and community partnerships. Many other groups assisted in the celebration, including Bimbo Bakery, Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, Glen Side Public Library District, the Glendale Heights Parks Recreation and Facilities Department, Glendale Lakes Golf Club, the Glendale Heights Youth Commission, the Junior Women's Club, Target, and AMITA Health at Venice Medical Center, Glen Oaks. To promote safety awareness, the Police Department conducted seatbelt safety checks in our school zones and aggressively enforced the hands-free cellphone law. The prescription medication drop-off box located in the main lobby of Village Hall remains a very useful tool to safely dispose of controlled and non-controlled pharmaceuticals. The Police Department and its Emergency Services and Disaster Agency, ESDA, continually conducts intruder drills with all schools in the village. The village also renewed an agreement with the Milton Township Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, to help train new Glendale Heights CERT members and provide ongoing training for current members. Joining forces with Milton Township CERT allows the village to tap into their extensive volunteer pool of over 1,000 CERT members in the event of an emergency. The Glendale Heights Police Department maintains transparency by sharing crime statistics with residents. If you want timely information on crimes in your own neighborhood... please visit the village website and click on Crime Reports. In addition, the police department publishes an annual report in March of each year with a more detailed breakdown of the previous year's activity. The report is available for viewing on the police department's page of the village website. The Community Development Department focuses on maintaining and improving property values within the village by encouraging economic development, performing construction oversight, licensing rental property, inspecting property when sold, and monitoring property maintenance. Economic development continues to be one of our highest priorities. We encourage new businesses to locate Glendale Heights, and we work with existing businesses on any issues that may arise to support their long-term commitment to the village. Increased economic development improves property values, increases the tax base through property tax and sales tax, and lessens the tax burden on all property owners as well as give area residents more opportunities to work, shop, and eat locally. We welcomed a variety of businesses to Glendale Heights in 2018. To start the year, we welcomed Alliance E. Recycling, Dunkin' Donuts, Beeve X. Incorporated, Good Tequilas, Kiara's Creations LLC, Minutemen Services LLC, Mueller Stream Mine Company, and Ultimate Granite &amp; Design. In the spring of 2018, we welcomed Advanced Moving and Storage Incorporated, Ally's Tree Services Incorporated, Anytime Fitness, Bismula Monticare Little Angels, Bridgetta and Lorena Daycare, Jill E. Wald Brandl Home Daycare, Little Land Home Daycare, Lil Queen and Kings Daycare, LP Tax Prep and Financial Solutions, Maureen's Home Daycare, Petals of Dean, Pfeiffer Family Daycare, Playing Hands Daycare, Priority Wire and Cable Incorporated, ArmArt, R&amp;R Garage Door Repair, Taco Euro Incorporated, and The Bakehouse Incorporated. In the summer of 2018, we welcomed At Dental, Armstrong Relocation of Illinois, Attainable Smiles Dental, LTD, B. Beauty, Convenience Valet, Cricket Wireless, Element Incorporated, Easy Transport Services, GMB Global Enterprises Incorporated, Hydeck Technology Corporation, Cabob Point, Kitty's Playground Management, Lovato's Pizzeria, M. Tax and Services LLC, Sinorama, Baskin Robbins, Expeditors International of Washington Incorporated, RS Express Incorporated, Polish and Slavic Credit Union, Fo Chu Hai, Rankin Incorporated, and The Great Indian Cafe. And in the fall and winter, we welcomed Bischo Industries Incorporated, Kang Dagoo Incorporated, Han Kaku Sushi, EAY LLC and Liberty Tax Service, Hassan Pakistani and Indian Grocery, Out of the Basement Toys and Comics, Practical Packaging Solutions Incorporated, CivCon Incorporated, Terricon Consultants Incorporated, Beauty by Shabana, First in Medical Transportation Corporation, Just Add Frosting Boutique, Prairie State Gaming, Sandman.com, Sabrina's Cafe, TEM Environmental Incorporated, and Rainbow International. Community Development Staff guides developers through the review process, including reviewing conceptual drawings, scheduling public hearings before the Plan Commission, preparing staff reports, and presenting proposals to the Committee of the Hall and the Village Board of Trustees for final action. The Plan Commission considered eighteen development proposals in 2018. Once approved, staff continues to work with the applicants as they submit building plans and construct new businesses. Each year, the number of building permits submitted has increased significantly. The Community Development Department received 4,185 permits in 2018, a thirty percent increase from the 2,949 permits in 2017. In 2018, the village continued to focus on economic development along the North Avenue Corridor. Staff worked extensively with Duke Realty on redevelopment of an unincorporated seventeen-acre area on the north side of North Avenue, just west of Swift Road. The area was annexed and redeveloped with an 180,000-square-foot industrial building. This very exciting project extended the village boundary eastward and eliminated a blighted area along the gateway to Glendale Heights. Several outdated structures along North Avenue were demolished to improve marketability and make way for future development. Additional projects were approved or are currently under construction, including Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers at the northwest corner of Glen Allen Road and North Avenue, which will begin construction in the spring of 2019. Construction of a new Jeep dealership was approved in 2018 and is currently under construction. And permits were issued for construction of a new Burger King and Popeyes restaurant at the southwest corner of Bloomingdale Road and North Avenue. We maintained an open dialogue with the shopping center property owners to provide assistance in locating new tenants to their centers and encouraging them to improve their facilities. Both Town Center at the northeast corner of Bloomingdale Road and Army Trail Road and Willowood Shopping Center just south of Army Trail Road are undergoing significant remodels and upgrades. The Target store on Army Trail Road also underwent a multimillion-dollar remodel in 2018. The former Dominix on Army Trail Road was converted to a self-storage facility and small shops. Maze Lounge began construction in 2018 and is expected to open soon. The village was excited to see Family and Faith Food Pantry open their new facility after many years of fundraising and construction. In addition to Community Development's focus on economic development, the department also monitors existing property in the village to help protect and improve property values as well as the safety of its residents. Staff identifies property maintenance violations, licenses and inspects rental property, conducts real estate transfer inspections, and responds to resident complaints. The village works with landlords and tenants to ensure that rental units are properly maintained through the licensing and inspection process as well as the Crime Prevention Partnership Program. Through this program, the village provides landlords and tenants information about their rights and obligations to comply with the law. This program is important to deter crime and help protect property values in the community. There were 2,223 single-family rental homes in 2018. Staff also inspects all common areas and a percentage of units of the 2,913 multifamily apartments in the village. Community Development Department staff also works with residents, developers, and contractors to provide information and assist with zoning, building, and flooding questions. It reviews new business applications and coordinates the reviews with the fire districts, police department, and Public Works Department. The department responded to approximately 239 Freedom of Information Act requests in 2018. It also provided zoning verification letters and floodplain information to property owners upon request. Staff also assists residents with flooding problems and minimizing floodplain insurance requirements. The Department of Administrative Services provides a diverse group of services and support to village residents and businesses while also supporting various internal operational needs of all village departments. Our services span from water billing, licensing, purchasing, and information systems. The Division of Water Billing is responsible for the processing and receipt of payment of water bills for residential, commercial, industrial, and nonprofit water customers of the village. The process of water billing begins with obtaining the actual monthly consumption of water for each customer to ensure accuracy of each bill. This is accomplished by the measurement of usage from the previous reading of your water meter to your current read that has been utilized in thousand-gallon increments. The village bills only for the water used that has exceeded 1,000 gallons. An example would be if your meter reported the water use of 2,975 gallons, your bill for this period would be a charge only for the 2,000 gallons of usage with the 975 gallons billed only after you use an additional 25 gallons in a future billing period. During the 2018 calendar year, the village collected meter reads for water usage by our customers totaling 773 million gallons and issued 106,213 customer bills. The actual cost of water paid to the DuPage Water Commission totaled just over $3.9 million. In addition to convenient online payments and automatic payment options, the village has successfully launched our paperless water billing options. To learn more about our convenient billing and paperless options, please visit the village website and click on Pay Water Bill. The village encourages all water customers to be alert to potential water leaks within their homes and businesses and to practice water conservation measures. The Division of Licensing provides the annual renewals of business licenses, vehicle stickers, pet licensing, garage sale permits, and the processing of real estate transfer stamps. Some of the unknown services provided by our customer service counter include voter registration and notary services. During the 2018 calendar year, the village issued 310 garage sale permits, 713 animal tags, 824 real estate transfer stamps, and 21,718 vehicle stickers to residents and businesses. Vehicle sticker applications will be mailed to homes in May. We continue to encourage everyone to purchase their stickers early by mail or in person to avoid long lines as we near the due date. As the village relies heavily on technologies for our daily operations, our information systems, IS Division, continues to work diligently behind the scenes, ensuring that our network infrastructure is safe from unauthorized access, data loss, and data corruption under a stable and redundant infrastructure. During the past year, significant improvements have been successfully completed, including a fiber network connecting Village Hall to both the Public Works Facilities and the Glendale Lakes Golf Course. The capacity of the fiber bandwidth has been significantly expanded providing improved data flow between facilities while eliminating costly telephone circuits and antiquated data connections. An upgrade to the village document management system providing secure storage of image documents. Over the next year, the IST will move forward to establish a redundant storage site to provide an additional repository for such important documents. A storage area network and two virtual hosts have been deployed at the Public Works Administration Building. Such improvements have upgraded and expanded the capacity for both the Village Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition (SKATA) systems and provided much-needed redundancy for a variety of applications. The Division of Purchasing is responsible for the overall procurement processes within the village. Under a centralized policy, guidelines are set to ensure all purchases will be made to obtain quality services and goods, receive competitive prices, while ensuring legal regulations are followed. The village continually utilizes various purchasing methods, including price quotes, competitive sealed proposals and bids, requests for qualifications, and participation in joint government and cooperative agreements such as the state of Illinois. The Purchasing Division is also tasked with the sale of surplus property. You can view the village purchasing webpage for listings of the competitive procurement solicitations and the sale of village surplus property currently underway. In 2018, a sidewalk removal and replacement project was undertaken in the village to replace structurally damaged and hazardous sidewalks. Another aspect of this project was to preserve the mature parkway trees. This involved elevating the replaced sidewalks over the root system of the trees to prevent heaving of the replacement sidewalks rather than removing the tree itself. Local road infrastructure was improved throughout the village as part of the in-house road program overlaying Fallbrook Drive, Floyd Brown Lane, Keating Street, and Elizabeth Avenue. This project involved the removal and replacement of deteriorated and structurally damaged curbs and sidewalks along with base repairs to the roadway before the new asphalt surface layer was applied. The in-house road program involved the repaving of over 5,800 square yards of surface roadway and the replacement of 250 linear feet of curb and 4,200 square feet of sidewalk. Street Division staff responded to 23 snow and ice events throughout the 2018 winter season, plowing and deicing 76 center lane miles of roadway and 147 courts. The Street Division also responded to twelve separate flood control events, including clearing of storm inlets and streams to alleviate standing water on roadways. Additionally, the Division responded to 396 work orders throughout the year and completed over 2,900 Julie locates for buried utility services. Utilities Division staff continued to perform maintenance to the public water infrastructure system by responding to 20 water main breaks, six fire hydrant replacements or repairs, four water service repairs, six mainline valve repairs, pump station maintenance, and Illinois Environmental Protection Agency (IEPA) mandated sampling. I am pleased to report that all IEPA sampling undertaken in 2018 resulted in no violations or water quality issues. In-house projects and maintenance to the water system included the painting of 330 fire hydrants. One water leak detection survey was undertaken in spring by Water Services Incorporated. The survey resulted in uncovering 17 leaks, 15 of which were identified as fire hydrant leaks, and the remaining two leaks were water main issues. Utilities Division staff repaired all leaks found within the system. Preventative maintenance to the village's sanitary sewer collection system also Preventative maintenance to the village's sanitary sewer collection system also continued. Jetting of approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand feet of public sewer mains was achieved. Also, annual root cutting and degreasing programs were undertaken. Additional maintenance work was conducted to the public sanitary sewers, including the finalizing of an inflow and infiltration, I N I, study in the North Avenue Ketchman area, which identified sources of structural defects and I N I. The village's water pollution control facility, W P C F, processed over one billion gallons of wastewater this year within I E P A guidelines and regulations. The W P C F, considered an exemplary plant by peer review publications, has continually operated well above the expected guidelines. The village also completed a capital improvement program to assist in budgeting for necessary improvements to meet new and pending discharge standards as required by the I E P A. The W P C F also rehabilitated one of its two influence fine screens. The screens are the first part of the process that remove large rags, sticks, rocks, and other debris that could damage the pumps and other equipment in the facility if left in the wastewater stream. The remaining screen is scheduled for rehabilitation in two thousand and nineteen. The V P A requires that a certified operator oversee every wastewater plant in the country. There are four levels of certification in Illinois. The village's plant requires the highest level of certification at a class one. The village has successfully trained its staff by having three class one operators on site, as well as one class three and one class four operator. The facility was found to be in good working order and no deficiencies were noted during its annual I E P A inspection. The W P C F entered into an agreement with Trotter and Associates for engineering services to rehabilitate both of the village's aerobic digesters. The digesters are a vital part of the operation at the W P C F and must be upgraded to accommodate upcoming phosphorus removal mandates set by the I E P A. Through its membership in the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group, D R S C W, the village is contributing to improving local stream water quality while saving wastewater utility payers money. Under an innovative partnership, the village is working with seventeen other communities to fund a series of waterway improvement projects throughout DuPage County as a cost-effective solution in lieu of wastewater infrastructure upgrades. The improvements include Faywell and Fullersburg Dam modifications and lower West Branch stream restoration. The modifications will allow for fish passage by reducing velocities through the dam and to reduce the low dissolved oxygen conditions found in the upstream impoundment. The engineering division ensures that the village upholds all local, state, and federal mandates, including stormwater management compliance and erosion control inspections on active construction sites. In two thousand and eighteen, the division reviewed over two hundred and ten permit applications, including engineering drawings and stormwater reports. The division provided contract supervision and construction observation for large road projects. One such project was the two thousand and eighteen Motor Fuel Tax, M F T, road program, which included the reconstruction of six streets at a total cost of approximately one point two million dollars. This project involved road reconstruction with curb and sidewalk repair, as well as drainage improvements. Another important road project was a one point four million dollar, two thousand and eighteen Fullerton Avenue Surface Transportation Program, S T P, Street Resurfacing Project. This project resurfaced Fullerton Avenue from Glen Allen Road to Bloomingdale Road. I am happy to report that this roads resurfacing project was paid for in part by a sixty percent S T P grant from the federal government and administered by I D E T. A highlight of this year's construction season was a Hesterman Ditch retaining wall. The village replaced an aging and failing timber retaining wall with a block retaining wall spanning six hundred and fifty feet. This ended the possibility of timber wall failure and erosion in the backyards of affected residents along Hesterman Drive. The project also included drainage improvements and landscape restoration of affected areas. Glendale Lakes Golf Club generated just over nineteen thousand rounds of golf for the two thousand and eighteen calendar year. Glendale Lakes Golf Club is proud to be the home golf course to five area high school golf teams. Glenbard North Boys and Girls Teams, Glenbard East Boys and Girls Teams, and the Glenbard West Girls Golf Team. Golf lessons are also available for juniors and adults who are wanting to learn the game of golf or just correct their slice. Glendale Lakes Golf Club hosts several annual golf events and outings. They include our Spring Fling in April, the Charity Golf Classic in June, the Summer Scramble in July, the National Fallen Firefighters Golf Outing in September, and the Turkey Shoot in November. The Charity Golf Classic is a fundraiser hosted by the village of Glendale Heights. This golf event raises money for Make-A-Wish Illinois, F O P Lodge Number Fifty-two Community Enrichment Fund, and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund. All money raised benefits the residents and families of Glendale Heights. The continuation of the bunker renovations occurred this year. We started the elimination of the left greenside bunkers on hole number sixteen and added two pot-style bunkers behind the green. We will continue to renovate a few bunkers each year, enhancing the play of the course and saving costs on materials and labor. We installed another set of tee markers on some of the holes to enhance and vary play for our frequent returning golfers. Our banquet facility hosted three hundred and ninety-eight banquets and special events this year. Of these events, thirty-three were wedding receptions. Couples that are looking for an outdoor venue can choose from our two options, the gazebo in Camera Park, which is across the street, or for a more private setting, you can have your ceremony behind the clubhouse on the first tee. Glendale Lakes Golf Club has beautiful banquet rooms that overlook the golf course and can accommodate up to two hundred and fifty guests. Glendale Lakes Golf Club is the perfect place for love, laughter, and your happily ever after. Our experienced staff will make your dream venue come to life. We can host other banquets, including baby and bridal showers, birthday parties, anniversary parties, corporate meetings, and events. Approximately ninety-seven percent of all post-event evaluations returned rated their event as above average or better. The Glendale Lakes Golf Club restaurant is open on the first Friday and last Friday of the lunch season. Join us on either of these Friday nights for our fish fry from four P M. to eight P M. If you are not a fish fan, our menu has a variety of other options to appeal to your taste. Visit the Glendale Lakes Golf Club's website for our new menu and upcoming specials. Glendale Lakes Golf Club also hosts an annual Easter brunch and Mother's Day brunch for an easy way to spend the holidays and leave the cooking to us. The Center for Senior Citizens offers comprehensive senior citizen resources, innovative programming, information sessions, social events, and exciting trips. The center was designed with the active senior in mind and includes a game room, fitness room designed for older adults, arts and crafts room, as well as a full service salon. The center has a library with a cozy fireplace filled with great books and four computer stations with internet access. The center's membership is just under two thousand members. We completed our eighth annual survey, asking our members what we can do to better serve them. The surveys gave staff and volunteers ideas for different programs and activities that staff will be trying in two thousand and nineteen. Many of our services are coordinated with local, county, state, and federal partners. These services include Benefit Access Application, B A A, Regional Transportation Authority, R T A, Ride Free Card, Senior Health Insurance Program, SHIPE, Assistance, and Notary Services. Volunteerism is an important part of our center. In two thousand and eighteen, sixty-one individuals volunteered one thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine hours to benefit the center. The center hosted seventeen special events with input from our volunteer senior advisory committee. The center's craft instructors organized the center's sixth annual craft fair. The proceeds for table rentals went towards craft supplies. An important component of the center's operations is its community dining program that provides meals on wheels, as well as congregate dining at the center. As part of our congregate dining, we provide lunch and learn programs. The center holds informational sessions on important social service topics to keep our seniors educated on healthy lifestyles and promote senior safety. In two thousand and eighteen, community partners helped the center provide sixty-five lunch and learn programs. The Agency on Aging Nutrition Grant via the DuPage Senior Citizens Council, D S C C, provided two thousand four hundred and thirty-one meals for congregate dining and sixteen thousand six hundred and ninety-nine home-delivered meals. Our Hidden Treasures gift shop continues to flourish with generous donations from residents and businesses. These funds help support new programs and activities throughout the year. The center has a successful community room rental that hosted one hundred and sixty-two birthday parties, showers, weddings, and anniversary events in two thousand and eighteen, which is twenty-five more events than two thousand and seventeen. The Parks Division is responsible for maintaining over two hundred and fifty-four acres of parkland and more than twenty sports fields and playgrounds. They are also responsible for approximately six thousand park and parkway trees. In two thousand and eighteen, the Parks Division completed several special projects. One of the largest projects undertaken was the addition of a new cricket field in Camera Park. Other projects included seal coating, the Camera Park parking lot, and walking paths, planting of eighty-five new trees in the parks and parkways, and the creation of a new monarch butterfly weigh station at Mill Pond Park South. Additionally, six new park signs were constructed and installed, along with restoring most of the remaining signs. All park signs will be replaced by the end of two thousand and nineteen. In addition, time was spent on exploring the feasibility of future projects. Some of these potential projects include upgrading the playground area at Camera Park and the restoration of the shoreline at Lake Becerra. The Facilities Division is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of all village facilities. They have been instrumental in renovating current buildings and worked diligently to provide the residents with clean and updated facilities. In two thousand and eighteen, the Facilities Division assisted the Parks Division in repairing the bridge at College Park and constructing several new park signs. Each year, the Recreation Division offers a wide variety of programs for all age groups from tiny tots to adults. The division strives to provide activities and programs that are affordable, fun, and engaging in a safe environment. Throughout two thousand and eighteen, the Recreation Division hosted twenty-six special events, including our first Go the Extra Mile Character Counts Color Run with three hundred and seventy participants. Plans are underway for Hub-a-palooza, scheduled for May eighteenth. This event will feature fun and exciting activities, discounted registrations, food, and prizes. We hope to see you there. This was a busy year for the G H two O Aquatic Center as they hosted six special events and accommodated over nineteen thousand patrons. Thank you to those who came out and joined in the fun activities. The Recreation Division offered sixty new programs and trips this year, and we continue to strive to offer more new and exciting programs each year. If you have an idea for a program or class that you would like to see offered at the Sports Hub, please stop in to speak with one of our recreation supervisors. Every year, our community grows stronger with new families, businesses, and organizations joining the village of Glendale Heights. I encourage all of you to read our bimonthly newsletters, visit our website, follow us on social media, or stop by and say hello at our monthly Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board on the first Saturday of each month. On behalf of my fellow village board members, I would like to say thank you for believing in us to serve the residents of Glendale Heights. Please do not hesitate to contact me, your district trustee, or any of our qualified staff with any comments, questions, or suggestions. Join us throughout the year in celebrating our sixtieth anniversary as we continue to make history that will last forever.
Mark, David, Nicole, for putting all that together. And I thought the reading job was very good, too. Okay, we now go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to address this board on an agenda item, please step Being nun, you have, oh, before we do the consent agenda, you need to remove number So if you had that removed, then a motion would be in order to approve the corrected consent agenda. Trustee Schmidt?
I move that we adopt the corrected consent agenda. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Potek?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so new business. Number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items number two through eight. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Did somebody second it?
Yes.
First reading is waived on new business items two through eight. Number two is an ordinance approving an amendment.
We have to take it.
We didn't go on it.
Waiving first reading?
Yes.
We just have to do a voice vote. We just have to do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we waive first reading. An ordinance approving an amendment to the conditional use to permit a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at eleven-seventy-three Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, that is Shelby's Cafe. That is from the March seventh, two thousand and nineteen Committee of the Hall. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash eleven. Trustee Meritato?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand dash nineteen dash eleven is approved. Number three is an ordinance approving an amendment to the conditional use to permit a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at twenty-one-ninety Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Stella's Place Cafe. That is from the March seventh, two thousand and nineteen Committee of the Hall. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash twelve. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash twelve is approved. Number four is an ordinance approving an amendment to the conditional use to permit a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at one-nineteen East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights. This is Stella's Cafe. From March seventh, two thousand and nineteen Committee of the Hall, first reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash thirteen. Trustee Meritato?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash thirteen is approved. Number five, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a commercial school for dance and music on the premises located at thirty-five through fifty-one East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Bright Lights Theater Incorporated. From the March seventh, two thousand and nineteen Committee of the Hall, first reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash fourteen.
No, two thousand and twenty.
Trustee Light?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash fourteen is approved. Number six, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Bright Lights Theater Incorporated, located at thirty-five through fifty-one East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Bright Lights Theater Incorporated. From the March seventh, two thousand and nineteen Committee of the Hall, first reading is waived, and this would be ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash fifteen. Trustee Pochek?
So moved. Second.
Chester?
Yeah, Joanne, I got a question. I don't think this was brought up at the Plant Commission level, but is there a dressing room for the kids, the small kids?
Yes, they...
Especially the girls, you know?
Yes, they do have facilities to dress. Either they come dressed, but they do have facilities on the site as well.
Oh, okay. I didn't think it was brought up at the Plant Commission.
It wasn't.
It wasn't? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash fifteen is approved. Number seven, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement for the Glendale Heights Fest two thousand and nineteen fireworks displays by and between Wolverine Fireworks Display Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights. First reading has been waived, and this is ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash sixteen. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash sixteen is approved. Number eight, an ordinance rejecting all bids for the non-taxic debris hauling and disposal services for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash seventeen. Trustee Meritato?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash seventeen is approved. Number nine, an ordinance reserving and authorizing the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters. This is first reading. Next, we are back to public discussion of agenda items. If anyone in the public wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Trustee Meritato?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Bill, you're gonna do Committee of the Hall. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to call the Committee of the Hall meeting of Thursday, March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, to order. Will the clerk please know who's present?
Noted.
Is there anything you would like to add or delete from the agenda? Okay, is there anyone from the audience that would like to make a public comment? Okay, we'll move along here then. Committee recommendations. Number one is Plant Commission, a recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use in the C Two Community Commercial District for a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages located at eleven-twenty Main Street, Unit One, known as Hard Rocks Cafe. Chester?
I move it to the board of recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pat?
Joanne, did we ever figure out what that resident...
No.
...winded with the fence or...
As best as we could determine, he was concerned about garbage and he wanted a fence. The issue is that we can't have a fence in...fence prohibited in the front yard, but we are talking to the property owner of the shopping center to make sure that he's doing property maintenance and we'll monitor that. But as best as we can tell, he's more concerned about the center than the proposed use.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Chester?
Hey, Joanne, I talked to John Thorson. He's got the business right next to this, and that wall on the north side is starting to crumble, and he's worried that eventually it's gonna come down, and he's got his driveway there on the side going into the back. That wasn't brought up at the Plant Commission, but I spoke to him.
Okay, we'll send code enforcement down there and we'll contact the property owner.
I haven't talked to John.
Okay.
Yeah, we've also looked at the doors and looking at all the maintenance issues. We've been out there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
This issue is passed and will be forwarded to the board. Okay, is there any discussion involving anything else? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Just want to make sure that we handled that correctly with a motion to move to the board with a recommendation to concur.
We did.
We did.
Okay, I didn't know.
I heard say recommendation. I didn't hear what the recommendation was, so I just wanted to be sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Move it to the board, that's what I said.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, motion to adjourn? Chester?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done.